That I, I, I think also that you are able to pin the people that you would want to see. If you go in the top, um, the top right of every person's, of every, every person's picture, um, you are also able to pin, um, who you would want.
Okay.
Um, and that, uh, 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 it'd work as well.
Okay, I'll figure that out.
Yeah, I know, uh, I know.
I don't want to hold you up anymore.
I'm no IT, I'm no IT expert, um, but yeah, that'll help you, I think.
Okay, I'll, I'll try that one talking, yep.
Okay, sounds good. Um, so, oh, and I see, um, I see there's also something from, uh, something from, uh,
Rich?
Rich, as well, Rich.
Rich, did you wave your hand?
Yeah, I mean, just to start, we can talk more about it later. Uh, it sounds like we're reversing what I thought and Will's going to talk at the beginning, so we can talk more later. But I was also concerned, as Liz was, about things coming in late. I, I spent a few minutes literally on that Survey Monkey. I thought the questions in there were extremely inappropriate. I have a feeling others feel the same way. So I'm hoping we don't use that as a guide. It's just not appropriate for these kind of meetings.
Okay, I'm not sure what's inappropriate, but.
They're very, very, very staff oriented. They're not policy related questions and they're detailed.
Okay.
It's not, it's not our job to figure out whether blah, blah, JPA should be high priority. I don't even sure what's asking. Made my head spin, so I don't, and I have a funny feeling I'm not the only one.
Okay, so, uh, Brian and Bill, what do we do? Because I thought everybody has read this all the way. Do we want to just keep presenting? Do we want to take some time to read it more?
Well, I, I think we, through the presentation, we, we have time set up today. If it's the players in the council, we'll walk you through everything that we've provided to you. Uh, and, and go through that in discussion format if that's appropriate. We're prepared to do that.
Okay, so, uh, let's see where people are at. Rich, do you need more time to read it before Will?
No, I, I think it's the same thing with the documentation, the Survey Monkey, all that. And Brian and I certainly talked a lot about this, that, uh, you know, we, we need, depending on what we say the purpose is, but since this isn't the actual budget meeting, we need to, you know, deal with, with things at a policy level that we, we feel are as important here, I would guess. I, I, unless we're prepared to go into specific budget items at this time, I'm assuming we're not.
Okay, well, let's have Will start then and, um, see where we're at and then we'll check in after he's done, if, how we want to keep moving forward.
Okay.
All right, um, so I will, I will, again, um, and I'm, and I, um, and I'm just, um, I'm just going to pull up a PowerPoint on the screen. So just give me one second on that. Um, and it, it, it will, it will, it will also, um, go through the key, the key of, uh, the key of, oh, yes, of the, uh, of the report, um, that, that we have, um, sent to the council. Um, so let me just to pull up the screen real quick. Thank you. Oh, um, us, hey, uh, us, Hazel, um, can, can you, can you, uh, can you, uh, can you, uh, allow me to, uh, uh, share the screen, please?
Uh, yeah, let me, uh, let me, uh, just one second. I'm going to reclaim host Andrew just for a second. And I'm going to give, uh, there with me just one second, Will.
Okay, thank you.
Let me see how you do that. Let me try this here. Nope, that doesn't work. Nope, that doesn't work.
Okay, so let me see, Will. Okay, Will, she should have everything you need.
All right, thank you. Let me try it again. Thank you, Hazel.
You bet.
All right, um, can, can everyone, can everyone see the screen now?
Yep.
Okay. So just give me one second. I need to do one thing real quick. Give me one second, I'm sorry. It's not working the way I want it, just one second. All right, so I will just begin stuff from here. Um, so again, um, again, um, again, I will, um, give a, um, I will give an update on the current, um, of the current fiscal year and fiscal year, fiscal year nineteen twenty. Um, we've, um, we've went through, um, the, we've went through the, we've went through the agenda for, uh, 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 today a bit. Um, and so I, I won't, um, I won't spend, um, I won't spend any, um, time on the agenda. Um, and I'll just get, uh, I'll just get right into the update of the, the, the fiscal year nineteen two, the fiscal year nineteen twenty uh, 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 numbers. Um, so I am, I, I, I came to, um, I came to a council, um, in the end of April, on April, uh, on April the, uh, April the twenty first, um, to give a, and to, to give a, an initial, a natural update to a council and, and the public um, about the, about the fiscal impacts of, of COVID in, in, uh, in nineteen twenty, um, and also in twenty, well, and also the potential impacts in twenty 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 one as well. Um, at the, uh, time of the April update, um, we had a projected, um, and, and, and income, uh, and income, uh, and income, uh, loss of about, of, uh, I paid, um, five, five point eight million in a total of, before, uh, before, uh, before the end of June. Um, and it, 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 it was, it was due to, um, it was due to, uh, a fact, um, that there was a shelter in, uh, a shelter in place, um, a shelter in place, uh, a shelter in in place, um, in effect. Um, and at, and at the, uh, time that we had the April update, um, it, it was, it was, uh, it was assumed, um, that the, that the, that the shelter in a place would be in a affect of through the, uh, through the end of June. Um, and any of, any of the, uh, D, at, any of the projected, uh, take, a decrease to income, um, was, was, was also offset um, by proj- proj- projected, uh, awesome, uh, decreases of about, um, H, um, eight hundred and eighty, okay, um, that, um, that reduced the net, that reduced the net impact at the time to about of five million dollars on the, uh, uh, general fund in the, uh, current, um, uh, year. Um, uh, since, um, the, uh, time of the April update, um, the, uh, the, uh, shelter, a shelter in a place, um, it's, it's been extended at, at least until the end of, uh, May. Um, but, um, the, we've, 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 we've also, uh, uh, seen an easing of, uh, restrictions on, uh, on, in, in construction, on, uh, uh, camps, uh, and, and also on, uh, on, uh, retail, uh, retail as well, and also the, uh, uh, companies who, who helped to serve on the, uh, retail, um, uh, uh, companies. Um, so we will, so we've, uh, went through our, uh, we went through our projections from April. Um, and we've, uh, this, we've done some updates, um, to, uh, give a council the most current info that we could, um, um, uh, today. So, uh, uh, attached, um, attached, uh, to, um, uh, attached to, uh, the, the level, um, that was, uh, sent to a council. Um, you'll, 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 you'll see a, a table A. A, a table A, um, like, uh, gives, and gives, and gives an update with, uh, a data that is, uh, current of through the, through the, through the end of April. Um, and it, it also, it also takes into account the, the, uh, payroll of, uh, the, the payroll of, the payroll of the payroll of area, uh, uh, through, uh, May the third. Um, and, and in, um, in, in, uh, in, uh, in, in going through the, 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 the income and expense accounts, um, the, the, the projections, uh, the projections, uh, I have changed. I'll bet, um, the, 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 the projected income, uh, the projected income loss by the, by the end of June, um, increased on two of, uh, two of five point nine million in a total. Um, but, um, each, um, a department also went through in detail, each of, each of their, each of their, uh, each of their supplies and, uh, like contracts accounts, um, to, uh, uh, determine what, uh, what are the expenses and costs that they would, uh, that, that are, uh, crucial, um, before the end of June. So in, 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 uh, going through each account, um, we were able to identify about, uh, about one, uh, one point, uh, seven million, uh, uh, dollars in, uh, uh, costs, um, that we are able, uh, to save in the, uh, current, um, year. And so it, um, it, it reduces the net, um, the net, the net impact on the, uh, general fund, um, uh, uh, counters. Um, but what, but what, um, caused that changes? So again, um, our, 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 our income, um, our income accounts did, um, did, did go down, I'll bet. Um, but there, there are, um, there are, there are some, there are some accounts that, there are some accounts that increased. Um, and there are also some accounts that, like, decreased. Um, our, uh, our, uh, our, uh, property taxes, um, they've, uh, they've, they've, uh, increased, um, a T O, O T, based upon, uh, returns of through, uh, through, um, through, uh, March, uh, decreased. Um, we've, we've, uh, we've, we've, uh, we've, uh, opened up our, uh, building, uh, permits, our building permits again, um, in, in the, uh, in the first part of, um, May. Um, so we've, um, we, 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 we project, um, that our, that our, our, our building, our building permit income, uh, will, will also, um, will also increase a bit. Um, then we also, um, expect, um, that we will be able to uphold, um, some, uh, 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 some degree of, uh, of, uh, of, uh, of, uh, of rec, uh, 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 camps, um, towards, um, a mid to the end of June. Um, so our, our fees, um, our, our fees for a rec, like, like camps and, uh, uh, programs, um, they also, our, our poor, our poor, our poor objections also, also did increase a bit. Um, we've, um, we've, we've not yet updated our, uh, our, uh, our, uh, uh, our, uh, uh, our, uh, house tax, uh, uh, our, our, our scale tax, uh, projections. Um, because we, we, we still don't, um, we still don't, uh, have enough, uh, uh, data, um, to, 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 to update, um, what, what we've, uh, what we told a council in the end of April. Um, the, uh, data, um, in regards to us, uh, to us, to us, out there, is, is, uh, typically, uh, a couple, uh, a couple of months, uh, a couple of months of, uh, um, so we, we, we won't, um, we won't know for sure about a Q, uh, about Q one, um, until the end of, um, um, uh, May. And we also won't, we, we also won't get, uh, uh, details on a Q one, um, until July. Um, we won't know for sure about a Q, uh, a Q, um, until the end of, uh, until the end of, uh, August. Um, and we won't get a detailed info until the end of, well, until, uh, um, so, uh, one, uh, when a new, uh, data, uh, comes in, um, we, we, we will, we will continue to update, um, the, uh, projections, um, and keep, uh, uh, a council up, uh, to date. Um, and then again, in, in, in terms of our, uh, uh, costs, um, um, each, um, uh, uh, department, um, wa, uh, wa, had through, um, had through every single, uh, every single, uh, why, and every single, uh, contracts account to, again, uh, 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 determine, um, are there, are there, are there any, uh, costs that we could, uh, uh, defer? Um, are there any, uh, costs that we, we could, uh, cut out in the, uh, current, um, year? Um, you know, what are the expenses that are, uh, 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 crucial? Um, so that, so that we are able to, uh, still, um, continue to run, um, uh, through, uh, through the end of June. Um, so we, um, we, we, we did, um, I, we did, I identify a, a big amount. Um, we are, um, uh, taking a cost and containment steps, um, in the, uh, 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 in the, uh, current, uh, year. Um, but we've, we've, we've also put into a place, um, a, 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 a new, uh, uh, open, um, a new, a new COVID program, um, so that we are able to, uh, attract, um, any, any, any and all, um, uh, 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 with a cost. Um, they, uh, could be for a personnel, a cost, um, they, they could be for OT costs, um, to purchase a P, a P P, P P A, um, or, or also to, uh, purchase, uh, to purchase PCs, um, so that people who are able to, um, dependent upon each, each person's, uh, job, that they're able to also, uh, telework, um, so that we can continue to, uh, keep our, our own, uh, uh, people, uh, healthy and, uh, uh, safe, um, but also so that they are, are able to, to still, to still stay productive, productive as well. Um, and we, we, uh, hope, um, that we'll, 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 we'll be able to, uh, detect, um, um, aid, um, either from the, uh, state or from, uh, the, uh, feds, um, in, uh, in the, in the, in the future as well. Um, so we, we will continue to attract each and every expense that could, uh, have, um, anything to do with, uh, COVID. Um, we, 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 we may not be able to recover all costs, um, but we will attempt to recover anything that we can. And I'm, I'm, uh, I am hopeful that we'll be able to, you know, some of our, uh, our costs, um, there, 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 there is a, um, a, a chance that we, that we won't recover all. Um, but I, I again am, uh, I again am, uh, uh, I again am hopeful. Um, and there, there is a bill right, uh, uh, there is a bill right, right now in, uh, uh, Congress, um, that, that, that could, uh, help out all, uh, public, uh, all public agencies. Um, and I hope that it will, it will, it will be able to, uh, help, uh, Campbell as well. Um, it's, it's still up for, uh, 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 debate. Um, I expect that it will change, uh, a lot, um, but it, it, it could be helpful. Um, so in, in conclusion, um, we still, we still project about, of, uh, about, of, uh, our, of four million dollar, uh, deficit in, uh, in nineteen twenty. And anytime that, um, our, 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 our income is, our income is, uh, is, uh, less than expenses, um, come the end of, end of each, um, uh, June, um, we, we either need to fill, we either need to fill the, uh, the, we, we either need to fill the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, with our, our own, uh, our own, uh, our own reserve accounts, or to, uh, go to the, or to go to the outside as well. Um, in a, a total, we've got about, uh, we've, we've got about a sixteen million in, uh, in, uh, in, uh, in reserves, um, that we could draw account upon. Um, over the, uh, uh, over the past, uh, a couple of, uh, a couple of, uh, a couple of, uh, a couple of, uh, hires, um, when times were, uh, like, when times were, like, good, um, we, we were able to, uh, build, um, our, uh, reserves upwards. Um, uh, just, um, just over, just over the, uh, the past, uh, uh, two years, um, we've, uh, we've built up the, the econ, uh, or the, the econ, uh, reserve up by a three point two, uh, three point two million in, uh, 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 total. And a, 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 a res, a res, uh, a reserve accounts only, uh, purpose is to, uh, uh, is to, uh, help, um, when times are tough. And, 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 and to, and to, uh, and to, and to help to, uh, and to help to smooth out, um, your, uh, 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 cost and your income, um, so that you don't see, uh, so that you don't see, uh, so that you don't see a big jumps, um, up and, uh, down, and, 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 and so that you are, 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 are able to, uh, uh, decrease of what you may need to, uh, cut, um, so that you are able to continue to, uh, uh, serve a public. Um, but in the, in the up, um, in the up, uh, in the upcoming, uh, in the upcoming proposed a budget, um, we, we are also, um, we are also putting, to, putting to other, uh, different, uh, a different, different options, um, to show the, uh, council what a, if, and a ten, and a, and a, and a fifteen percent a cut, uh, 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 would be, um, and to, uh, give the, uh, council, um, a different, uh, a different, different, uh, different options. Um, but in the different options, um but in the uh current um in the in the current nineteen in the current nineteen twenty, um I do and I do and 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 that we will need to a draw um a a on our 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 reserve accounts, um I won't um I I won't know the a total um um amount um until we get them and the the total about one hundred percent um until we get them to the end of uh August, um a b- a b- a b- but I'm I am able to I I am able to tell the uh council a um official um up- updated uh pro- uh objection uh to to today um and we 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 don't um a ra- recommend a in external allowance um yet, um because we we really don't got a like actual a problem, um it's 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 really an and and take a problem and and one that that over a a time, a wa- over the next one to two and out um of as goals, um that it w- it will also rec- rec- over as well, um but if we if we if we do, if we if we if we do see a uh 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 actual a problem in the future, um then we w- we we will return to a a council, um and we and we will continue to, we will continue to explore um external of luck of loans, um to of to fill um to fill any of our uh a flow and our our careful needs at a time um so in 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 terms of the next um in terms of the next us 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 steps, um we will do um we we will do a we will do a we will do a a budget um intro- introduction on a tune of the uh ninth, um I I I will um I will also take to a a like council the adoption of the uh twenty tw- the twenty tw- twenty tw- twenty tw- tw- twenty-one of uh of highs as well, um but I I will um I will pr- I will also oppose um that we not um we not do and we not do an increase, um but in instead um that we a a come we a comeback um of in in a note uh in note in note uh no uh no number, um to see where we are um at the a time, um and if um if if the uh a council would a wa- if the if the council would a wa- would want to do and would want to do an increase um in a mi- in nope nope uh nope uh nope uh nope nope number, um but I mean I also in budget, um I will give a council of two um extra two extra two extra uh options also, um to to either do a s- a C a CP a CP a CPI a j- a a adjustment, um that would go into a that would go into a if effect in a July or also um um s- a su- a s- a some some adjustment that a c- a c- a could be in 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 between a a C a C a CPI adjustment and also a no adjustment, um and I I will show um a a council the uh the different uh the different uh the different uh impacts of each of those, um and then on June the uh twenty-fifth, um uh taking into account any any of the any of the input either from the uh council or also from from the public um that we've heard on June of the uh ninth, um we we will also go for um the uh uh the budget uh uh option as well, um so that um that uh that uh ends the that ends the the uh update, um and I will now I take um I will now I will now take any um any uh questions, um and I will turn off a screen as well Okay, Rich?
Uh, okay.
Thank you, thank you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, thank you.
Somebody muted me, um yeah, I mean I was talking to another council member about this last night, I this seems I don't know, just just talking about the agenda, which I think is important, because I I'm hearing a lot of people with concerns over that so you're saying you staff's gonna come up with like three scenarios about, you know, if things go better than we think, if things go like we think, or things go much worse than we think and then somehow before that, we're gonna have a CIP discussion and we're gonna have a budget discussion um it seems like we need to have this scenario discussion, I mean that's part of a main part of the council, I'm always saying we're in too much detail, but certainly, and this may be one for Brian, we need to start talking about you know, priorities within the different thing, not at the detail level, but you know, do we think this is more important than le- than that from a high level, so you guys know if and when we need to cut something, we do, I mean, we're not the most optimistic, you know, thing where everybody's gonna go back to the scen- the scenario you're talking about is after we get a vaccine, and that's the most optimistic is gonna be the second half of next fiscal year, so we're gonna have a lot of hurting, I think everyone in the council thinks that, so we it seems like we first need to talk about priorities, should things go to these various scenarios, let's say three scenarios, uh good uh okay and and go bad, it it seems like that's what other cities have been doing, so I I don't under- it seems like we gotta talk about that first and not just immediately sit down with everybody's work plan and go department by department, I don't wanna go by department by department that's my opinion, I'd be interested to hear others, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Something's wrong, Cecil, are you doing weird with the meeting?
So the 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 system muted, everyone, Cecil's unmuted, you now, hold on.
Okay, my my voice is back, but my video's still locked out. Okay, I hung up, so do you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my I was completely locked out there, so and I heard only half of what Rich said, I think I got the gist of it, though. Okay, he's working on my video, so I think Liz, you were raising your hand?
Uh, yes, um so I I would like to tag along with what Councilmember Waterman said, a little bit differently, but very much um along the same lines, um so um my expectation of this meeting was somewhat different, um and I think that to basic thing, um I um was expecting that staff would come back with what they thought, I I thought council gave very clear during the last meeting, that um we didn't wanna use the surplus and that we wanted staff to come back with um their definition of essential services um so that we could respond to those essentials and then put in um our priorities and concerns I think we were trying to let staff take the lead um and not get caught up in the detail, which I agree with Councilmember Waterman uh we don't wanna do at this point, I know, I certainly in February had a different expectation of what priority setting was um and after April meeting, I sent um some notes to staff um about all of this and what I thought some of the key issues and responsibilities and um decision points that the council would need to make, um and I revised them last night based on what we've learned between April twenty-first and and now, um I I think that um I just think that we need to have a discussion um of what the core essential services of the city are so that the council can stay at the high level figure out what we need to do.
Okay, uh Paul, do you have any questions? You're on mute, Paul. Brian, can you hear me? You're on mute also there.
Yes, I I can hear you, see what the the channel somehow muted everyone, Cecil's going through to unmute everyone, just bear with us a second.
Okay.
Done muted now?
No, now I can hear you, Paul.
Yeah, it just I kept getting a message saying I can't unmute, the host muted me.
Right, I was getting that too, and now my video is still turned off.
So just um briefly, I would agree and just say Brian, if you look at the um input I gave you on that survey, it really focuses on what are the priorities I see and that's what we have to accomplish, and beyond that, there are daily tasks and other work plan tasks we do but if we accomplish, in my case, these three or four things, that's what we should focus on, so that we're doing it that way, kind of I my my comment in there, if it made sense, was I'm not saying all these things that I said are no priority, aren't relevant or aren't important they're relatively unimportant if you don't do these three things these three things, and staff can go ahead and do the others, we don't need to know the daily tasks so I agree with um we're trying to come up with a priority, we'll call it directions or objectives or something that say this is what is important for the next year, that's kinda how I thought I it it should be.
Okay, Anne?
Well, I concur with the other council members, um I I look at it as two a two that there should be the council priorities, which are the policy decisions, the overall goal to achieve, and the work plan items that were sent to the council in the survey, to me, are are not policy, they're they're staff-driven, they're operational to keep the engines running, to get from day to day, and it's really up to the staff to be determining what it is that their priority is, and coming to the council and saying that this this function is is a mandated function, it's an essential function, or it's discretionary and advising us to if if there's a a fiscal impact to it, can we save money by doing something? And and it's, I'm looking for direction from the staff, I don't feel that that's a council decision to be to be determining what the staff work plans are.
Okay.
We I think we as a council need to determine what our overall priorities are and 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 then move on, and I also feel that we need to be the council direction from the last study session was that we we wanted to minim- use a minimal amount of reserves to get through this, that we we need to look at our our model and and I mean it's a different day, and we're and our our service delivery is different, and we should and staff should be looking at at all opportunities to improve functions, reduce where we do reduce, we we may not be able to provide daily service, calendar service from Monday through Friday, eight to five, based on what happened with COVID and 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 um our our obviously our recreation programs were gonna be affected, because we can't have large gatherings at the theater or group group uh sports teams, so we we need, the staff needs to be looking at all of those um scenarios.
Okay, and I think I saw Liz, did you have more comment, or Paul, I see Paul also, Liz first, but you're on mute. Liz can't uh, Brian, we're back to-
Now I can.
There you go.
Okay, um I just would offer, um I think staff did um a a an appropriate job back in April on the twenty-first, telling us that we were going to be four million in the hole, give or take, and nothing much has changed from that what I'm looking for is what is council, what is staff's expectation going forward? Councilmember Waterman just said something that is similar to mine, I do not think we're until some point in twenty twenty-one, um so staff seems to be running on a different plane I think we need to establish what staff expectation and planning horizon is, so that council can agree or not. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Keep getting notes, sorry.
I I'm my video is still off, but I can I heard most of what you said, there was a little cut out.
Yeah, the the note keeps showing up so I'm just saying, I think it will be helpful to kind of understand, staff presented what the problem is this fiscal year, um be that as it may, we haven't gotten there uh resolved, but what are they thinking for next year, how are we, and I'm not saying I what's to be cut, but are we expecting revenues to continue down in the same plane, and there's something in the report about that, um so that council can agree that, you know, it's not gonna come back in September, that kind of a conversation I think that would be a helpful level to to start from.
Okay, I saw Paul waving his hand, but Brian just waved his hand, did you, Brian, did you wanna talk before Paul, or wait?
Uh I I can I can wait till Paul and I can press all the comments.
Okay, Paul?
Okay, just just briefly, I mean, I'll I'll second what House Member Biden said, which which is part of this discussion is probably things we can't do, I mean there 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 gonna be some services that we would like to do, they either may not be relevant, because those functions don't exist for years, she said or or that are very important to people, we do the survey of street maintenance is one, but it may be that we can't maintain it to the level we did before that doesn't mean that it's not important, but I think we should set the priorities of what is more important, and then in this case of public works can 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 get what he what he can done, with the understanding that it's a secondary priority so I agree with what she said, that um I'm wondering too, what ser- what what services are not available to us anymore because of restrictions on on being out and about, and then other what other ones does council feel just should take a second the second place behind some of the other more important ones.
Okay, Brian, you were waving your hand also?
Yeah, I I I appreciate all the comments in the council, and I wholeheartedly agree um as to the direction of the council and process, uh and that's the direction that staff is taking and working on uh to look at service levels uh and our service model, and we're working on, as Will showed in his PowerPoint presentation um the teams are working on three different scenarios at five, ten, and fifteen percent uh and to be able to articulate that uh when we come back uh June ninth, that that is certainly what's intended what we're hoping today is to get feedback from- What we're hoping today is to get feedback from council on priorities and really strategically where the council wants to go as we refine those. Uh, we'll certainly want to take that into account, and that was really the intent of today, is to, can you take steps down that path and ensure that we're consistent? Um, with regard to uh projections and where, and the question about where we see this economy uh over time, um, you know, I, I can assure you that we're not looking at this in a vacuum. Uh, one of the things um I've been working on with the finance department, Finance Director, is, is a uh projection tool. We didn't have it ready for today. Uh, but we will be showing you uh tools that will project out uh where we see both revenues and expenditures at all levels. Um, I think it goes out 10 years, Will?
He's on, oh, there he goes.
Uh, I thought um it, it is out to eight, uh, eight years?
Okay, thank you. Um, so we will be providing that to the council. Uh, we, it's just a, a matter of crushing for information and, and the time to put that together in a meaningful format. And we're not there today. And that was part of the reason I mentioned in the chicken or the egg at the beginning of this discussion. It's hard, I understand, for council to provide some definitive direction without kind of seeing that piece of it too. Um, so what I was hoping to do today, once we get through the, the, the budget presentation, was to talk high level uh about our priorities for the year, make sure that we're all on the same page uh on those. Uh, I didn't intend um to, to have a item-by-item discussion on the work plans that was provided to the council, just so the council and the public can be aware of the level of, of things that we're working on. And there's questions about what, what we're doing and what we're working on. Uh, but I'd rather focus, as the council is suggesting, on the high-level strategies and, and uh projections for next year.
Okay, so I didn't get to make any comments. Um, I think Councilmember Bybee said it very succinctly, the three things, the council priorities, the work plans of staff and operations, uh getting the information about their 5%, 10%, 15% cuts. And then the fact that we had directed them to use the minimum reserves. Uh, I didn't see anything in here that uh talked about what could be cut to then get closer to using the minimum amount of reserves. So we're saying that this is it. This is our expenditures. We can't make up for any of this. Brian, Will?
We're, we're kind of combining um two fiscal years here. So the presentation today was on current fiscal years. The scenarios that we're running are really for next year's budget. Um, we are continuing to look at ways to, to cut this. This is purely um for the council. It's a month since we gave you your last update. Um, actually, and things have changed uh uh by about $1 million with what was projected before. Um, so it isn't the same.
I understand that, but we're still taking $4 million out of reserve.
For this current fiscal year, that is correct. That's what we're currently projecting, is running a deficit of $4 million. Now, we don't know what that number is going to be at the end of fiscal year. We'll keep reporting to the council. And we'll keep making efforts to look at ways um uh in services and contracts. Um, but right now with, with the, where we are uh in the fiscal year, that's our most up-to-date and accurate projection.
And there's nothing that we can do to lower that? To get, to not take out as much reserve?
Well, these are projections. So, you know, there's things that we can continue to do to look at reducing contracts and services. Um, we've done that exercise with staff for a large part, um, but those are factored into a projection. So as things become more um uh solid and not a projection, they become actuals, that number could change.
By how much? Like, are we going to go down $1 million or $2 million?
I, I think that might be overly optimistic, but Will, do you want to touch base on that?
Um, in, 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 in terms of um, in, in terms of any um additional cost that we, we, we could uh, uh, uh increase, um, the thing that the council needs to understand is that we've got too much, okay? Also, a 50% of our costs are payroll costs. Unless we shut down everything, almost everything, except for, except for, uh, uh, except for, uh, except for, uh, at least, our, our, our turn, our current cost per, our current cost per, our current cost per, our current cost projection is what we expect. If, if, it could go up, it could, it, it, it could go a, a, a town. We are attempting to control every single cost that we can. But 50% of our, our costs are, are payroll costs. We've, we've a lot of, a, 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 a times ago. We aren't, we aren't, we aren't paying, we aren't paying for apart timers. The only, the only, a cost are, are still our fault, our full-time. But those, a cost are also not that easy to just turn off either. It takes a time. And the, the sole, the sole of, a purpose of a reserve account is to, is to help and to ensure that you, that you don't, that you don't need to make harsh and quick cuts on, 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 until you, until you know, until you know for sure how things will uh, 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 turn out. And if, if we, I, I mean, I understand the council's uh concern. And we, and we will, and we are taking every step that we can to ensure that we don't need to touch the ruh, touch the ruh, uh, ruh, touch the ruh reserve accounts. But if you don't ever touch them, then why put them, why put them, why put them, why put them in place? So, 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 so I, 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 I don't, I don't mean to be a blunt and stuff here, but 50% of our costs are payroll costs that are not easy to just turn off. So, 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 we, we will do everything that we can to help. But I, it, 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 it needs to be understood that a good, a good portion of our costs are, are payroll costs that are not easy to us as well.
Okay, um, so I'm having a lot of problems. Uh, everybody keeps cutting out. I can't get my video on. I, I want to log off to the meeting here for a minute and try to come back in and see if it'll help. So if we can take a one, a few seconds here to allow me to start over, hold on.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I've been, I've been pretty much locked out of this meeting the whole time. I, I'm, I'm here, but I just want you to be aware.
Here we go. Uh, I still have my videos still off, but can you hear me?
We can hear you. Susan, you've clicked the, the stop and start video on the bottom of your screen?
There's nothing on the bottom of my screen.
If you hover either at the top or the bottom, there is a button that says stop video, start video.
Yeah, I know.
Try scrolling down.
Hey, oh, from my side, it looks like everybody has full control, so I'm not sure what's going on with the video for some folks.
Yeah, my, my video now won't let me come back on.
Yeah, I don't have video either.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on.
I, I've got a message that says you cannot start your video because the host has stopped it.
That's what I'm getting also.
Okay, one second. Let me take a look.
And apparently some of the transmission to the public isn't working.
Yeah, we're looking into that as well.
Do we need to take a couple-minute break, Cecil, to get you to work on it?
Yeah, if you could.
And then maybe I'll log back in?
Uh, no, I, I would just stay in for now. Uh, let me take a look at this first.
Okay, so why don't we take a five-minute break to let uh Cecil figure this out? Okay, but we're not to log out, right?
Yeah, go ahead and stay in, yeah. Go ahead and stay in, for sure.
Okay. All right, five-minute break.
I'm back.
There you go, all right. So Paul, it looked like I was on your side.
Um. It was starting from, what are you doing, Cecil?
My screen has been doing all kinds of things.
No, I, I'm not doing anything. So what I see, by the way, is, is I have, everyone has full permission to turn off video and/or sound, although some of you are experiencing uh, it may be internet traffic related. Sometimes they'll, they'll degrade video first and sound second.
Tell them when they want to turn off video.
Well, and also to Cecil under, under participants?
Yeah.
It says, uh, Mayor Landry, mic on, video off, and then under Cecil, City Manager and Finance, they all have it being recorded, but no one else does, has that little thing of record.
Oh, that's okay. That just means that you're, you're recording the meeting. That's, that's a little bit different.
Okay, so-
Mic off, I may not be able to turn it back on. That's, that's what I'm worried about.
Yeah, I just, yes, just stay, just stay where you are. Don't touch anything.
Okay, so we're still taking a five-minute break though, right, Cecil, to help you?
Uh, yeah, that's fine. I, I, I just want to make sure the permissions are correct.
Okay, I'm going to go on mute now. My video is still off.
Okay, I'm, I'm.
Susan, you're back visually. You're on mute.
Okay, now, how are we doing?
Got you.
Okay.
Can we try and hear you?
So uh, let's go through, I'm going to go through people and let's see if we can hear you, Liz?
Yes, on air. I'm leaving it on. I'm not turning it off.
All right. Looks like I see most, most people are, are on, so I'm, I'm not going to touch anything.
Okay, so I, Paul Resnikoff, say hi.
Yeah, I'm on. I, I don't think I can, I don't think I can mute and then unmute again, but I'm on.
Okay, so Rich, I show you're on mute. Rich can't hear anything, or Rich can't see anything?
Once you mute, you're, you lose control again.
Okay, Rich is, there we go.
Yeah, I'm okay.
What I just did is I unmuted everybody. I'm not going to touch anything. Um, so you can unmute, of course, yourselves and, and re-mute, but I would not do that. There's something to be, something to be unstable.
Okay, so Paul, Kamoyan, say hi.
Hi.
Paul, Bill?
Hi.
Anne?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
And let's see, there's uh Will?
Hi.
Gary?
Hello.
Uh, Mary, Miriam?
Lauren.
She can't hear us. Uh, Andrea?
Hi.
Okay, Jill? She's not here.
You can't unmute. Oh, now there she is.
Okay, I'm good.
Uh, Todd?
Yes, hello.
Hi, Nori, Nora, Norita?
Norret.
Norret, I'm sorry, can't read here. It's so small. Gary, did I say hi to Gary? Okay, it looks like everybody's on, but now we're all on, on mute, so be careful what you say. Paul Kamoyan?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to report an observation and maybe this may help provide some positive hope in the future. Unlike the last recession that we had back in '07, '08, um, we in community development saw a sharp decline in applications. We are not seeing that now. We are not, just so you know. Today, we took in about $100,000 in a plan check-
Oh, great.
-for the Trojan storage. I've reached out to every big project we have, Presley Homes, Ropesen. They're all lining up. They, they can't wait to submit. So I just want to let you know, on, on the development side, it still seems pretty healthy and there still seems to be funding necessary to realize these projects. So that's, that should be a sign of good news. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Great. Paul Resnikoff's raising his hand.
Thank you. So I just want to make a comment. So first of all, um, Will, uh, thank you for your bluntness. I appreciate it, actually. Um, I, so, so let me thank you also for the report. I think the report's a good update and it's good to see we're $1 million almost off where we were before. I appreciate the update and, and the fact, I guess, that as much as I also want to use as few reserves is limited in what we can do for this fiscal year. So I'm, I'm accepting what you're saying, that, you know, that's what that's there for. We have to do it in the short term. What it means to me is that when we look at the next fiscal year, then things, so if we have to continue, we can't take the reserves down to zero. I would hope not, because we don't know how long the recovery will be. So what I'm going to look for in the next fiscal year budget is what Councilmember Bybee talked about earlier. That's where the service level cuts, I would, I, I would think would be. Uh, we can't do this anymore. Hey, Public Works, what can you cut out over here? And, and that's for staff to figure out. So I'm, I'm appreciative. I think, I think I trust your judgment. Um, I think you understand this more than, more than we do. Um, it makes sense. But I think we have to be aware that, that um, that limits us moving in the future to really looking at non, let, let's say, starting with non-personnel or payroll-related cost reductions, which are service-level reductions, and payroll uh savings if we have to. But um, I, I, I accept what you said, and actually, it's refreshing um to hear bluntly, so thank you.
Okay, did uh Anne or Rich, oh, Liz?
Well, the others would-
Anne's on mute. Rich, did you have something?
No, I just don't want to mute it because then you told me-
Yeah, Anne's still on mute. Doesn't look like she's shaking her head of wanting to talk, so let-
So um, I, I, I don't just-
So, um, I, I don't disagree with what Councilmember Resnikoff said. Um, we have a little bit of an elephant in the room, but I think that the, that's why I asked about what we're planning in the long run for the next year's budget. Um, I think we really have to understand that. And as to Community Development Director comments, one of the, I'm gonna say, observations I've had, I don't consider party, but it's more of an observation. We do have programs such as permitting and building that are self-funding. Um, and that's great. Um, we also have some programs in Park and Rec that have been self-funding, but depending on the number of students, that dynamic may be changing. Uh, but we have funds that fund city services of sales tax and TOT. We need to understand the reduction in those revenues are going to impact us. And I think it's important to have, I'm gonna suggest, um, one policy kind of thing that council, that is something like, um, services that are, um, necessary to meet community needs, existing commitments, self-funded. Little thing for staff to come back, is what we're doing. We have to look at is how we fund other essential services that come with funding from sales tax and TOT and other sources.
Okay, you cut out a little bit, but what, from what I got of that is that you wanted to make a policy that, um, to identify services that we have to meet the needs and are self-funded, and then also what other services are not self-funded.
I, I don't know if policies are a word, but I think it's important to understand that, per the example that the community development just gave, is that there are some services the city can provide because they are self-funded.
Right. But the other part of it that you said was that the ones that are not self-funded.
The ones that the general fund backfills the costs on and based on sales tax and TOT, yeah.
Okay, so what, Brian, let's make sure I got this right, but my understanding is staff has or will prepare the, these 5%, 10%, and 15% proposed cuts to the different services and programs. And when will we get that?
Coming to you on June 9th. You'll get that in advance of those, of that meeting.
June 9th. You're cut, you cut out a little, June 9th.
I'm sorry. June 9th is a scheduled date for those, for those discussions. You'll get the material in advance of that meeting.
More than advanced than what we got now?
Yes, that's our hope. I think, Will, were we saying June 4th distribution for that material?
Okay, so five days ahead of time. Okay, so Rich?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to what the Vice Mayor said. So I was at a meeting the other day with County Supervisor Wasserman, and, they're expecting a big, we, and, um, a big reduction in property tax evaluation, I guess Larry Stone and those guys, and that's what they did 10 years ago, have the ability to go out and, lower by whatever percentage it isn't fixed to 2% or 4%, so we're expecting, they are expecting, it was a big deal. This is for the library, and the library depends almost 100% on property tax, so there, there will be some hit to property tax, I'm almost for sure. I don't know the amount.
Okay, I haven't heard from Ann in a while. Ann, do you have any comments?
I don't. I don't have any comments at this time.
Okay, so I guess now I want to know how we continue to proceed this morning. Uh, we were originally gonna take a break at 12:30 and then do the county call at 1:00. Um, so the part of our discussion today was about priorities. Uh, did we get that Survey Monkey? Did everybody fill it out, and do we need that today? Liz did not fill it out. Rich is shaking his head, Ann shaking her head.
So, so if I may, Madam Mayor, um, yeah, we, that wasn't completely, it was an attempt to maybe use technology, but I don't know that it would be useful today without everyone having a chance to provide some input in that. Um, I think some of the comments I've heard is trying to focus back on the higher level versus down at the grandeur lower level. That was really there to try to help stimulate thought process on the types of things we're working on, but the goal would be to really set our priorities for the year, um, which we've included last year's priorities in the packet. There's really five of them from last year. Um, and perhaps, you know, at the appropriate time, it'd be good to start focusing on those and see the council's interest in moving forward on those priorities, or adding, or deleting priorities from that list. And if we get to that today, I think we've got enough input then to start refining those work plan items for your June 9th discussion.
Okay, so, um, hang on real quick, Liz. Let me ask a general question to the council. Do we want any more discussion right now about the budget shortfall that we have this fiscal year? Yes, no? We do not need any more, right? We're all, we're all good on the budget. Right?
Yes.
Okay, Liz, you were asking to ask a question.
Now, I lost my train of thought from what Brian was just saying, um.
Well then, oh.
So, so my, so I'm, dear Councilmember Bybee is getting great comments from being focused on her earlier thoughts. Um, I was trying to say earlier that, um, the world's different now, and our sense of what priorities are now are different. Um, I mean, one of my priorities used to be, and we had our buck, we had our bin list, and we had our parking list, and we're all the things that we wanted. Things like getting a parking management system in the downtown, all of that. All of that kind of priority has all gone away. I mean, it's just not where our minds are. To me, this is where I was hoping to have more information from staff on what they considered essential services, because, um, I wanted to, to see, and, and, again, to me, this is more teamwork than priorities. Wanted to see finance have a plan, they're going to attack, if, how we're gonna attack reopening all the silly city facilities, and how much that's gonna cost over and above what we used to think. Um, how much, um, we have in the way of, um, where else can we save? Um, I have some suggestions. There's some state money that the governor announced this week. There's other sources of money. So I was hoping that the finance department would come forward, not so much with budget stuff, but new thinking, new ideas, new pieces of information. Um, I'm, I do have some very important thoughts, which will surprise no one, on housing. I really feel the council needs a lot of information, make that import, understand the importance of that for the future. Um, and I have some governance comments.
Okay, so, uh, let's do this. Brian, if this works, Ann, are you trying, no? You look like you were trying to speak.
Go ahead, Susan, and I'll make it sound.
I'm sorry, Ann, like, everybody's cutting in and out. Say that again, Ann, please.
Just complete your thought, and then I'll, I have a comment to make.
Okay, well, my thought was, yes, we're missing this information that you're asking for, more than one of us is asking for. Uh, my understanding, Brian, is that we're gonna be getting this information on June 5th. Right? The percentage reductions, what's essential, what services they would propose to cut, so we are not at today. But what we could potentially do now is look at the things that we had last year of the five, there were three categories, five priorities. If we wanna continue with those, and then what do we want to add at, probably at a minimal level? And then at that, where they're not final, and then we wait till June 5th and June 9th to finalize the priorities for next year. Or Ann first?
So for me, the three, I have three top priorities, and they really continue from this year to next year. And it's Measure O, it's JDM parking, and the general plan update. I think that needs to be done. I think those are three major categories of, items that need to be completed. And, um, um, of less importance, of importance, but lesser importance would be, obviously, to continue to, um, track legislative updates and things that affect the city in, in the areas of local control and budget control. And also, um, building maintenance issues, particularly at the community center. I think we need to be focusing on that. Um, not only at the community center, but overall, in our public infrastructure, because the longer you delay repairs and upgrades to, uh, city facilities, the larger the cost gets, to, that I would be focused, that I would want to focus on.
Okay, Rich, I think you were next. Rich can't, we can't hear you. Your mic's off.
Sorry, I do, I, there's a lot of background noise here, and I, that's happening with other people, but I think mine's probably as bad, so it's hard when I can't mute. Maybe there's another way to do it, but, um, so I agree with Ann. Um, something we talked about in past years, and it's also true, is somehow we have to separate, so some of the lists of, we're talking Measure O, you know, obviously, a high priority means keeping the economy going, you know, trying to survive this, you know, the last downturn 10 years ago, quite a few cities didn't survive, they went bankrupt, so keeping viability, and then, later, starting to promote business. But we have to separate, because Ann, you were also making other lists, and you and I have talked about this quite a bit. There's what you were calling the engine, and I think I've said, keep the trains running on time. There are day-to-day things, and as we each list things, it, mean maintenance of parks, or maintenance of the community center, or, as a good example, the police, critically important. Obviously, they're critically important. I think those are the engine of the city, to quote what Ann said. I think we have to separate that out. The engine, the day-to-day running of the city, would be a priority. We could go through that and look at department by department, police versus community development versus, you know, the, uh, Public Works keeping the roads going and saying, what's that important? But I, I think we have to sort of have a general view. When we talk about maintenance, we should talk about maintenance. I don't know if we need to get into this maintenance versus that maintenance. So I'm hoping we're not gonna dive into the discussion of day-to-day city operations. Like I said, if Brian's gonna give us a list, it would be more look, if we're gonna cut, these are where the cuts are. Again, hopefully, high level within different areas, and do that. That's different to me than council priorities, which should be long, longer term. Measure O's a longer-term project, general plans longer term. Fiscal viability is always a longer-term goal. Um, there's only specific I add was, uh, this is to, to turn them around as quick as possible is, is more of a short-term goal. But somehow, we have to separate. I think this is where we get tied up every year. You know, the issue of, of, you know, Ann, you were talking about, for example, the legislative, but that's kind of, we have a lot of ongoing tasks that council members do, staff do, so you have legislative, I have Savak, I have, I have Ray JP. Those are ongoing tasks. Again, they're important within their own right, but to me, that's kind of a separate, they're usually not budget hogs and things. So somehow, and this is where we sort of get in circle, it seems like every year, is trying to separate out these different categories of things. So I'd rather, at least today, keep high-level, policy-oriented things that are, are gonna bring us forward. Thank you.
Okay, Paul, did you have comments?
Yeah, similar to what's been said, I think, um, I think, like Vice Mayor said, certain, certain things that were very important to us just aren't, aren't important anymore in the new world. Um, I agree with Councilmember Bybee that, that, for example, building repair, and we always talk street maintenance. If you don't do it now, repairs later are more expensive than pre-maintenance. That being said, I'm still willing to delay those. If, in fact, the street maintenance stops public works from somehow getting Measure O done, then we just have to pay more later, and some of it's also gonna be cash flow. I think, Will, you made a comment about sales tax, and we're evaluating that, but as I understand it, businesses can pay late. If they can pay late and move out the payments, we may get 100% of our sales tax, and we don't get it for a year, doesn't matter. It's a cash flow issue. So I'm willing to look at things like building maintenance and street repair that are critical, and say, yeah, they're critical, but if they're 12 months out and cost us more, that just may be life in the new, in the new era. So I think the keys to me are, are keeping the city going. That's, that's on, you know, senior staff, mostly Brian and Will, of keeping this city going fiscally sound and coming back as quickly as possible. A subset of that is working with the businesses, not just downtown, but throughout the city, get them self-sustaining, get them hiring people, so that they generate sales tax, and that helps us come back, so that's kind of tied. I think Measure O is an obligation we have to do, and we can't lose the ability to get that funding and all that, so that, to me, moves forward. And you know, it's funny, the one, the one thing that, um, that I elevate in this time, especially if we're gonna have pandemic issues for three months, six months, a year, we don't know, right? Is what became very important to people from the contact me I've seen online is open space. The more people had to stay in, the ability to get outside, they were so upset when the track closed. They were upset that there were too many people invading their space on the creek trail. To me, all of a sudden, especially if people are sheltered, and we may be, may be doing this again in the winter, who knows? And even when people get out, that became a very, very important thing. I think if we were doing a survey now, it elevates that up higher, that escape. And the more we have of that, and that could be a trail, that could be whatever, the more we have of that and give people that opportunity, I think it's important, important for mental health too. So I would say economy, city, economy, business, part of that, Measure O. And I'm actually saying, I want to put focus on some open space and have that available for people to get out of their houses, or when they're out. That's somewhat of getting back to normalcy, and I think it's important. And I think there's a lot of things like building maintenance and street maintenance that we have to do, that I can delay on. And lastly, Councilmember Waterman said, and one of the items on the Survey Monkey was, public work supporting like the JPA, solid waste JPA. Those are things that are gonna be done because we're part of the JPA. We don't need to worry about that. They know what they need to do, and those tasks at that level, I think just should happen.
Okay. And Liz?
So I, I think this has been a very good discussion. Lot of consistency, different perspectives, but lots of consistency. Um, I would just like to clarify a definition when we talk legislative. When these high priorities, I might use a different word like economic stability, which is very much what Councilmember Resnikoff was just. Um, uh, the one that I think is very important because it's outside of our control, and it is gonna influence us for the long term, and that is legislation, and that is land use and housing. And, um, I think Councilmember Waterman and I have spoken quite a bit about the fact that there's a lot happening in our community, not unlike what the Community Development Director just said. There's a lot of places where we need, we have discussed the need for specific plans. So, um, I think that we cannot lose sight. We need to be, we need to help our community, and we need to be safe. But we also have to be aware of what's gonna come down and alter, um, and we have to, a lot or a little, whatever the council wants, to recognize that. And, um, I am hoping that staff will follow up and have a meeting with the mayor and I that we requested to talk about, um, housing and, um, the Plan 2050 and the RENA and things, because it, difference on how staff spend their, in the future, and the decisions that the council will make. Um, and then one final comment is, And then one final comment is, the governor said yesterday about some money he was going to give to individual cities. And I don't know where that stands.
Okay, so I appreciate everything that everybody just talked about. So if I look at this thread, this little part thing that had our priorities from last year, you guys all have that. It's in the agenda package. It talks strategic objectives, council adopted priorities, and then comments by council. So based on what I just heard, everybody has Measure O on their list, which is, to me, still ongoing. It's a priority, but it seems like the engine is moving forward and we've now got the architects on board. I agree with Councilmember Resnikov about our open space. And one of the things that I put on the Survey Monkey about that was, we are not getting any new land. We are getting people paying in lieu of fees, and we're banking money. And that was one of my things under open spaces, how do we get more land? Everybody wants to go outside right now, and it is elevated in people's importance, but we don't, we're not buying land. We aren't even making a little developer who's putting in 30 houses, put in a park all the time. I know a couple lately, they've added a park, which is private or public but maintained by them, which is good. But most, a lot of others are paying in lieu, like the Cressley Home had no money towards buying land or setting aside land on their parcel. So I made that under open space, under council comments, instead of just parks, playgrounds, trails, it's bought, you know, getting more land. The community participation, I felt, didn't include, one of the topics that we talked about is it's not just keeping the community informed about state legislation and the housing. It's also about being more transparent and letting them know everything that we're doing under community participation and trying to engage them more in the process. The housing legislation and the other legislation, it seemed to have come up, mostly Liz brought it up. I think it is important. Rich and, let's see, Rich, Paul, and Liz talked about economic stability and fiscal viability, which I think right now is one of the highest priorities. You know, make sure the city doesn't go bankrupt, make sure we don't keep using more of our reserves. And that we need to be more sustainable. We also want to keep the businesses going and looking at the economy. Our revenue is dependent on the success of the businesses. So that, to me, would be a good thing to add. The last one is the general plan update. There was Anne and Liz and I, or I didn't bring it up, but I want that one to be on the list. But my concern right now is, from my understanding, is the general plan is in administrative draft right now. And we never had the preferred alternative that was picked from the GPAC. We never had that come back to us to approve it. There are some issues with the environmental review of who is paying for the EIR or the environmental document. It's not going to be a full-blown EIR. But who's paying for that? Who's managing it? The last I heard is it's through the existing consultant, which to me is not acceptable. So to me, the general plan needs to have some, I guess, review of where we're at. There's no housing element in it. There, a lot of these new legislations may not be in there. The council doesn't have access to the administrative draft, but it seems like it jumped the gun. And so I do think that that needs to stay on our priorities. So based on everything that I heard, the list doesn't change a whole lot of what's existing. And the two things specifically to add is about fiscal stability and keeping the economy going. Secondary to this main priority list, to me, is this whole lifecycle costs of buildings and streets, maintenance things. What I mean by lifecycle cost is, there's part of the roof at the community center that's falling off above people's heads. It's a ceiling that's falling off. Where is that on the list of what is priority? And to me, I can put all of that into one category of our lifecycle costs. Where, what are we projecting? When's the roof going to be needed? The whole roof fixed at the community center. If we're going to maintain our parks and look at open space, we already had the playground inventory of things that need to be replaced. And I don't want to lose that, because that goes to long-term costs, that goes to the five-year plan of where do we need to be projecting this? Or are we going to have such a shortfall that these maintenance things are going to just keep falling by the wayside? Which to me is not good, because then they're going to cost more later if more of the roof falls off at the community center. So I guess in summary, this list that we have, I don't see anything coming off this list. We, the two things about economy and fiscal stability. Does anybody else see anything on this master list? Rich?
Well, yeah, I mean, I would, geez, I would certainly take things off. I, to me, housing legislation is like a lot of things. I know Vice Mayor's passionate about clean energy, and I like to see that. I'm on the Library JPA. I'm, you know, following a lot that's going on with the county library. Paul's on the whatever, and you're on whatever, and these are all important. Some of them are legislation-oriented, but they're important to get in the middle of, have the city do it. I don't, the idea to say that it's more important than other stuff, and I don't see that at all. I think it's just one of many things that we all need to get involved in. And council members individually, like I said, the Vice Mayor can decide that SVC is important to her, and it sounds like the mayor likes the group she's in doing housing legislation. And I like being on Savaka, and Paul likes being on the Trash, and all those are good. I don't see that it's, you know, the world is, we can keep having council meetings to talk about it. We're very limited, because the other thing is not just money. It's, as I've said hundreds and hundreds of times, we only have so many council meetings during the year. And a lot of them are going to be budget-oriented this, this coming fiscal year. And now we want to slip in, what, more legislative discussions? Again, I'm happy letting the committee take care of that. I'm happy with, just a second, Vice Mayor. I'm happy letting the Vice Mayor take care of SVC. We don't have to have constant discussions of that. I'm happy taking care of Savaka, and we could go on and on. General plan and housing, I see no reason, we've had that discussion, they don't need to be integrated. So I think we need a status on it, we need to get it done. I think that is important. Open space, I'd like to see us have just eight, this discussion, which we never have, which is what you're getting at. Is it realistic to think we're going to be buying, buying property? Various areas big enough to make a real park? Are we talking about just, I'd like to understand that better. But is that a priority the coming year? Not to me. Thank you.
Okay, so hang on, hang on. Paul had his hand up, and then Liz.
Okay, I need, I need to clarify what Councilmember Waterman just said.
Okay, so Paul?
Oh, okay. No, I agree, I, I think, I would agree with what was just said. What, what worries me is getting too detailed. So for example, a category is that obviously the city should be doing ongoing maintenance that specifically puts people at risk, for example, dangerous situations. So I don't think we need to detail that portion of the roof gets fixed or whatever. But if, if, if staff deems that that is a risk to people, they need to take care of that on an ongoing basis. It's what they do. It could be that they, that it doesn't need to be fixed now, it will cost more later, and that is the decision to make too. In priorities that we talked about before, the majors have to say, you know, we're not getting to it yet. But I, but I, but I think some of those things are things that go all the time. It was kind of like in the, in the Survey Monkey, talking about implementing online payroll systems or something. We've done the past online permitting. The issue should be-
Hang on, Paul, it kicked me out completely.
I can see you.
I know, but it kicked me out. I couldn't hear or see anybody. It's rebooted.
You there, you back now?
Yeah, now I'm back. You got kicked out at the part of, when you were talking about building maintenance, right at the end of that.
What I was saying was, certain things are more task level, what they repair. They should be tasked on an everyday basis of fixing things that are dangerous or need to be-
Right, I heard that part after that.
And also the same thing, like in the, in the survey, we had something about payroll, automating payroll, which I would like to see. We automated, we automated some permits in the past. There ought to be a bigger issue maybe for us is the automation of processes. But I, but I hate to see us get into, I don't see payroll on here, I don't see this on there. I leave that to staff. My last comment is, I'd like to see the legislation monitored through the legislation subcommittee. I always wonder how much impact we have by writing a letter anyway. We should be kept aware of that, but I don't think some of the long-term fears of legislation that may or may not come due should, something sucks up a lot of staff time, given, given what I think are the priorities. We have a legislative subcommittee, which is great and can bring forth what's, what's important. But they could, I think they would be more apt to weed that out and not involve staff unless something's more imminent.
Okay, and then I had a comment, but Liz, did you have?
I do. So I tried to clarify this, and apparently I didn't. Andrea, the city clerk, can you pull up the slide of the map? So I totally, completely agree that having, following legislation in and of itself is important overall. Subcommittee can clearly do that. So I think that last year, when the housing stuff was different. But what I was trying to talk about now is it's the impact of the legislation that is going to impact the city's future, specifically the general plan. I'm totally agreeing that just tracking legislation can easily be managed at a subcommittee level. It's not a priority in the, in the level of things that we are now talking about. But Andrea, are you there? Can you pull that up, that slide up? I just wanted to show you, and I've mentioned this a couple of times. And I'm sorry if it seems hard to grasp, but I will offer that, yes, it's important to me because it's important for the council to understand the impact on the city. There is a process going on at ABAG to prepare this document for 2050 come the basis of the RENA numbers and allocations. And it has a map that identifies areas in the city that their planners think should be where all housing should go and where we will ultimately get a, good, okay. So she showed it here. Yeah. So all the areas in purple, and I know you can't see the Campbell boundary too well. But all the areas in purple and are areas where the MTC, ABAG, think we should be developing. And there's assumptions like a light rail system along 85.
Okay, Liz, can I, can I step back real quick, Liz?
Okay, I'm just, if I may close by saying, I'm trying to provide some illustration of the point why I think it's important for the city.
Okay, thank you. I guess I want to make sure we're, we're kind of getting off past our main topics. And I understand how important the 2050 and the housing and all that is. But what we're trying to figure out is, what do we want to have as our priorities?
And I am, sorry, Susan, Mayor, I am answering that. The question was on the list that you read. It says housing legislation. And Councilmember Resnikov and Waterman both thought it meant the legislation tracking the legislation. And I'm trying to explain that it's not tracking legislation anymore. It's understanding the impact of the legislation on our community.
Right, and that goes to a subset of the priority of housing legislation, past and future, and the impact of that. Andrea, can you go back to where I can see everybody? Yeah, there we go. One thing I want to clarify, oh, Anne, you had comments?
I just wanted to say that I, my comments were actually in response to what I heard earlier in that staff was looking for direction from the council as they developed their work plan items. And the items that I refer to as the maintenance, the ongoing maintenance in, in the legislation is really within their work plan. It's to let them know that this is a priority and that we should be looking at ongoing maintenance as a priority, but not necessarily as a priority this year. It's, it's an overall priority as they develop their work plans. The same with the legislation. I feel that the legislative subcommittee has, should have a purpose. We should be reviewing pertinent, that affects our, our community as far as local control and budget control. And that it, it could play a more active role, but, but within the scope of the work plan items, not to be a major work, overall priority. So I wanted to clarify that.
Okay, so I want to do a little summary again. I heard three categories of somewhat of priorities. The first one, I'll describe as our subcommittee assignments. Rich and Paul mentioned Savaka, and I forget what the sanitary name, little letters are. But we each individually have our subcommittees that we're on. And that then only if it's a, relates to our main priorities, like the housing legislation. The subcommittee then relates to the bigger picture, to bring forward what the issues are. So for instance, Councilmember Resnikov at our last meeting emphasized the impact of SB 1383 and the recycling. So at that point is when it comes to the council. And then that goes through how the legislative subcommittee. So we all have our subcommittees. Then we have the category of the work plans. The priorities, like what Councilmember Bybee just mentioned, about a priority within the work plan could be emphasizing the building maintenance. So when you come back with these 5%, 10%, and 15% cuts, from what I'm hearing is, don't show that one as a high level of cut. So that either as-is or say only 5%. The third category is this bigger, larger overriding priorities like we had last year. And so the point I was trying to make with this is that we haven't taken anything off this list. We've defined it a little more. And then we've added this fiscal responsibility and helping with how the economy is going to recover. Does that make sense to people that there is that, the bigger priority, the subsets to the bigger priority? Rich?
Yeah, so that makes it easier. I mean, the, so the bigger priority would take community participation, those two subcategories off, and we put that to the middle category you mentioned, because that's not a, you know.
Well, again, I, when I meant community participation before, it was way beyond legislation. So if community participation is still a topic, it should be more inclusive of just legislation. And I haven't heard from anybody that making sure that the notices go in the mail or that we go in the newspaper as a high, high priority. Yes, it's important. So that one could come off, and then the legislation, and that goes to the legislative subcommittee, which then they bring it forward when they-
To, to the, to the Vice Mayor's point, you could then integrate that into what we're calling, if you want to reword the term general plan.
Yeah.
You know, develop, you could come up with the word Vice Mayor. But I, I think all of that is in the next, you know, I like the, always the idea from councils of the five-year plan. We happen to have a general plan, but, but where are we going? And that is going to be reflected in the housing element and the general plan, in these new legislations. All that integrates into where, what, I don't know what the word is, that you guys have been on the planning commissions, know, or Paul can tell us. But overarching, where is the city going with development, I guess, is what I would call it.
Well, and that could be called something like the land, the long-term land plan, long-term planning. Paul and Liz could see if they have a better name for it. But it goes to the long-term planning of the city zoning, layout, how- the long-term planning of the city zoning layout, how housing's going to impact us, how the ABAG's going to impact us. So yes. Yeah. You like that? Okay?
If I may, I don't disagree at all because, primarily because of the confusion, the, that whole category of housing legislation and legislation overall, be taken off the priority because it confuses us. I do think that under the land use, that we do need to look at a comprehensive understanding of housing and things that are going to change the, the community. And I think, if I may just say, the general plan began five years ago. A lot of the assumptions and existing conditions were based on five years ago. So there's a lot of that that may need to be reconsidered. So I'm fine with that one.
How about if we call again a new one? Comprehensive long-term land use planning?
Fine.
I got some thumbs up from Rich and Liz. Paul and Anne, does that sound better than just referring to the general plan? We got an iffy on Paul. How about Anne?
I'll give you a thumbs up.
You had some sideways and up, okay?
I was making you wait for the vote.
Okay, so Anne, you like that term, comprehensive long-term land use planning? That incorporates the general plan, the housing legislation, the 2050, everything that affects long-term land use. We got a thumbs up, Anne?
You're changing the title, the priority?
Well, I'm just rewording, instead of just having, in the strategic objective of land use and financial health, the council adopted priority said general plan update. So I was trying to find a category that incorporated the general plan, the housing legislation, the 2050 plan, the PDAs as a category.
Yeah, I, I guess if you're changing the priority, then that then matches the strategic objective, which is part of the, the general plan. Is that my understanding?
I'm, I'm trying to reword the title. I, I don't want to take general plan update out as a priority. I was trying to combine it with the other things that we talked about.
Okay.
Okay. And then, okay, so the housing legislation and others are not going to be listed in the big category called council adopted policies. And so we're going to keep, under land use, what we just talked about, this comprehensive planning, Measure O, and then to me, financial health could add in here, where we talked about the city's fiscal responsibility and economic development, economic recovery.
Economic recovery.
Economic recovery. Okay, Brian, are you taking notes here? He's on mute. Brian's on mute.
I'm sorry. Yes, I'm trying to take notes, but while we get this all out, and we'll circle back and make sure what I've taken reflects what you're.
Okay, I'm taking some notes too.
Okay.
Okay, so that covers the first four under priorities. The fifth priority was open space. And so the, under open space, to me, it goes to, are we going to build any new parks? Are we going to change this in lieu fee? And how are we going to address open space? Is that the description of the priority? For open space, I'm not seeing, Rich?
Just what I said before, I mean, I'm okay, I, I don't know if it's, out of everything we're going on, happening this year, it's the discussion we need to have. But if everybody's feels it is, and I think everybody else does, then I'd like it. But I would like a discussion, as I said before, on, you know, sort of a come to whatever moment of, of, what's the deal about it? Are we, you know, we haven't purchased any properties since I've been watching, which is a while, you know, when I was in Parks and Recs and all that. We haven't purchased. We got Zadonovich donated to us. So outside of that, are, are we really thinking about buying? Is that, is that realistic? Forget about the downturn. So do we think in the next 20, 10, 20 years, long-term, we're actually going to go out there and spend some real money on a real park, not just, you know, like, Bones Park's a real park. I didn't mean to knock it, but I meant, is there a real idea here that we're going to get a park? Or is it more like we've talked about before, that, you know, one of these big office buildings or something, or, or retail that's there now goes out of business, and we put in housing, and that housing is going to have a big park that everybody can use? So I, I would like, it would be good to have the discussion. Doesn't necessarily mean at the end of the discussion, it's a priority.
Okay, so for me, under open space, for instance, the, when, when we talked about it last time, there are some housing developments that build parks, but they're more seen as private parks. And our biggest thing right now is that a person does not have to build a park. They can pay this in lieu of fee. And so if, if open space were a priority, to me, it would be then get rid of this in lieu fee, or reevaluate how a development, what they have to build. Because I don't think we have land anywhere to buy a big park. Open space can be a trail. Open space can be a pocket park. Paul?
Well, I, I agree. I don't, I've never thought that we're going to be in a position to buy a lot of land, right? And sadly, if we could, it would eat up the parks reserved, and not, we wouldn't have the money to do something on the land.
Right.
To me, the immediate ways of doing this are, are, two examples we have. It was repurposing the community center playground, picnic area into a playground. Made it, made it nice, in a wasted space before, and people seemed to love it. The other piece to me is this trail, because we don't have to acquire land. We can, we can, we can have something out there where people walk. And the fact that people go around the track, around and around and around again, they will walk a mile down, a mile back, and it doesn't have to go anywhere. So to me, that's the way we improve it. We improve on the facilities we have, and we, and we do a trail or two where we acquire land with the water district or something, where we don't have to pay for it. I think realistically, to expect that we're going to spend millions of dollars on property, it, it'll, it'll never happen. What they did for us, these days with the value of land, they even regress to say, we'll take half of it, half the value. I mean, in fairness to them, that property is now soared, right? So I don't think we're ever going to see that again. So to me, new trails, like we're looking at one, and, and figuring out how to expand, like new playground areas and things like that, that's what I like to do.
And what about this, the fact that you can pay money into it and not build a little park?
So I guess, look, two, two things I'll say about that. One is, if we can get more space for the public, that's a good thing. Let's start with that. The second piece is, if that money is going into enabling us to put the million dollars to JDM and to upgrade Campbell Park, and to put in the community center playground that we did, and maybe build a trail, are we going to lose those because the money is going to something else? So that's, that's, that's all that money we've accumulated over the years. I guess I would ask in another time, for Public Works Director to come in and maybe explain to us, if we did what you're saying, what would be the impact on the?
Right.
And if, and if he tells me, well, we wouldn't have had a million dollars from Oregon, then it's a bad thing.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not against it. I just don't know if it's going to suck up all the funds we have in doing other things with.
Well, that would be, if it is a priority, that could be a subset of the priority.
Certainly. There's an analysis in thereof, if we took the money away and did what you're saying, and let them spend it at the development, what would it cost us in other projects we do now, because we rely on that money? It may, it may not impact them, but I don't know. So I would hedge on that one, because I don't know, I don't want to lose the ability to do playgrounds and trails if we don't have that money.
Okay. Anne, I think I saw you raising your hand.
I, I just feel like that's a discussion that, that should be had at a different time. It's either we're going to make open space a priority as a council priority and, and the board.
Okay, Liz?
I would just offer that also. I, I'm pretty sure, and we don't have to have this conversation now, there are different definitions of open space. The open space fee has been, and I believe Councilmember Resnikov hit it, that it was to, anybody who moves in needs open space and common parks. Parks. That was in fact meant to provide that money and support for the community as a whole. There is also open space requirements for projects, and that's in addition. And in some projects, we did in fact negotiate, your open space is internal to your project. So there's two ways of looking at it, and that can be a more detailed discussion later.
Okay, so are we saying that that's not in this highest level of priorities? We haven't ranked, we haven't ranked these priorities.
I'm fine to leave it there. I just want to offer that it, as Councilmember Bybee just said, there's a lot more to it.
Right.
We don't want to predetermine what we mean by it.
I would agree. If I could, I don't think we should define what, what that is necessarily. We're saying, this is kind of like the thing before of, of automate things or maintain. We don't have to say exactly what those tasks are. And I think I'd like to hear more info from Public Works on what those options are, and what, what the different uses of the money are. But I'd like to keep it a priority.
Okay, so now we have seven priorities. Oh, no, I'm sorry, five. We're back to five. We just changed it from comprehensive long-term land use planning, which combined the first three under the council adopted priorities, and we added the two of the fiscal, fiscal sustainability, I think we used the word, and the economic recovery. Does anybody else have any, is that what people want as the priorities? Brian, you have what you need?
Yeah, let me, can I just summarize what I think I'm hearing, just so we're all in the same page? That we're keeping legislation, we've revised how we're going to, not a little bit.
We're not keeping that.
No, that, that becomes a subset of the comprehensive long-term land use planning.
I got you. Okay.
Goes away. Both of those go away.
They're a subcategory. It goes through the subcommittee.
Everything has subcategories, yeah.
So that's under comprehensive long-term land use planning. And then I have, did we, we kept Measure O in there?
Yes.
And we've kept our added fiscal stability and financial recovery. I put those as one. Do you have those as one, one priority?
I think they can go combined together. They relate to each other.
And then I have open space.
Oh, one thing we didn't have was JDM. Do we want to put that as a subcategory under open space?
Yes.
Yes.
I think some of these are, have a life of their own. I think somebody else said that earlier. They're just part of regular business. JDM is, if I'm following you, that work is being done for the inclusionary park? Is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm saying is, just like Measure O is on, Measure O is moving forward, but we're making that a priority. Anne mentioned JDM. It's ongoing. So to me, JDM is not a main priority category. It falls under the open space priority. Does that make sense? Anne, does that? I didn't hear what you, did you say yes?
Yeah, I, I mean, to me, if we're looking at priority, JDM is, is a major work plan for, for the Public Works Department. And so to me, that should be a priority, a council priority, to make sure that that gets done.
Separate from being under open space.
It could fall under the open space category. It could be a subset.
Okay, I just want to make sure that it is still considered a priority. Rich, did you have a comment?
Well, I mean, again, this is, I, I guess I'm all right. I mean, what Anne's saying's fine. I mean, we always sort of get, again, in the same trap every year, which is, you know, to say, kind of these work plan items, which may have been the result of the council saying in prior years, it's a priority like Measure O and like JDM, or it's a priority, which we never put on our list, as I've said before, things like street maintenance or the police department. Those are, as Anne calls it, the engine thing. So their engine is getting that done, getting it done on time. But the same thing, we could make the same discussion about the police. Part of their job, part of the engine is getting that going. So we, I, I know these things overlap, and that's where we kind of get trapped on it. So I'm okay leaving it in, but just being it clear, the council's already kind of, we've kind of done our job and said it's a priority now. You could argue that with Measure O, but it, it's now staff's job to get it done and get it done at the proper time and in the proper way. So.
Okay.
Lots of discussion in that. Thank you.
So Brian, let's do a check-in. It's about 12:20. We're going to have a lunch break, and we're going to, people who want to participate in the county call at 1. Do you see that we're going to need to come back after that, after 1:30, to talk about what we have more? Or do you have everything now? I, I feel like we've kind of accomplished what our goals are for today.
We were fairly efficient. I, I think just that input on those priorities and the comments that were made earlier is enough for us to move forward. So I've got enough, unless council adds additions to the discussion.
Well, I just want to make sure that, okay, so we got the main category, we got some of the subcategories, and then this third group was the work plan. And when staff comes back on June?
Oh, Susan, we lost you.
Frozen.
Susan, you're totally gone.
Am I gone? Am I still there?
Now you're back. Now you're back, but we lost everything you said in the last.
I'm having tons of communication problems. Okay. So I guess, so the third category is as you come back with these work plans, and you're proposing cuts, it, from what I'm hearing, it doesn't seem like one, we want to cut 15% has to do with the building maintenance, building upkeep, long-term planning. The day-to-day operations, that's, the rest of it is for you guys to come back and show us these percentage cuts. Is that clear to you, Brian?
Yeah, we'll take that input, and that will, you know, the budget proposal that's coming to you June 9th, that's correct.
Okay, so let me go around in voting order real quick. Is there anything anybody else feels we need to talk about? Because otherwise, at 12:30, we'll end, and we don't come back then today. Rich?
I'm good.
Anne?
I'm good.
Paul?
Good.
Liz?
I would just offer, on your story, that one back, they remember the term that council has asked in the past, which is essential services. When they present scenarios, it's essential services that we're needing to understand. And I am nervous, I'll just put it out there, I am nervous, that having a meeting on June 9th leaves an awful lot to be agreed to in order to approve by the July 1st deadline in our council meeting. So the more we can do sooner, the more staff can get to council members sooner. And the opportunity would be to ask the city manager to have individual meetings with council members on that material, so that there are no surprises in the meeting. I think we're productive and helpful, certainly for me.
So the schedule right now is of today, Friday, June 5th is two weeks out. Brian, is there anything that you could get to us before June 5th?
I don't know. I can commit a specific date right now. That's what we commit to, and we're working towards that. If, if we can beat that target, certainly do that. And we'll be prepared to have things set up, individual council members to go through that very detailed in advance meeting, so that we can be efficient, and there's not surprises at the meeting.
Okay, so one last comment from me then, is a subset, just like we've had these other ones, of this fiscal stability and economic recovery. Are we going to have a proactive plan of what happens if COVID comes up back and with the vengeance in the fall? And that that falls under this, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to pay the Chinese fire drill next fall. We're going to have pre-planned, we're going to know what we need, we're going to have indicators of when to activate DOC, that kind of stuff, right? That's all part of that category?
Yes, we're, we're preparing that plan, correct.
Because that'll need some budget money and staff time for the budget for next year.
Yeah, we're trying to provide for that sort of advanced planning.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Is there anything else for the good of the order? No? We're all good? I don't have my little hammer.
Anything staff wants to say?
Yeah, so anybody in staff for the good of the order here? You guys are good? I don't see anybody. I'm trying to zoom back and forth of pictures here. Ann?
I just want to thank staff for what they've brought forward. It's a very challenging situation, and it's changed daily. And I do appreciate the efforts that are underway to try and accommodate council direction and while maintaining services and providing the services that our citizens are accustomed to. And I just want to say thank you.
Yeah, and I'll ditto that. I think you guys did a great presentation, Will, very detailed information, very, you know, lots of numbers to juggle around, but very well presented. I think it's great how hard staff has been working and also to all the people that have worked through this. I mean, we've got Diana in the office every day, we've got Andrea there, we've got Paul's over in Public Works, Todd's over in, or I'm sorry, Paul's in Community Development, Todd's in Public Works, the police are working. So I want to say an especially thank you to everybody and to Brian. You've kept the engine running, maybe not full throttle, but the engine has moved forward. And I appreciate everything that everybody has been doing. And so now, the last, the next time we're together as a group is the council meeting on June 2nd. Okay, we're good to go. Rich?
Oh, yeah, just real quick, probably you don't know yet, but do we know if we can meet live or it's going to be memorized?
We're planning for both scenarios.
Okay. Because I got to figure out whether to.
Yeah, we're planning Zoom meeting at this point because I don't know that there'll be large gatherings even if something changes, but we are planning for both agencies with reduced seating possibilities.
Okay, so I'll just put a plug in because we don't know till the last minute of whether we're going to be able to do live or not. I'm, I was planning on going back down to my mom's. And so to me, it would maybe just go ahead and plan another teleconference. I don't think the state law will have changed by then that we still would be able to do it.
Bill, do you want to?
Yeah, actually, we don't know that is the, is the, is the answer. The governor could pull the plug on the stay on the Brown, on the Brown Act at any time. So I mean, you could still teleconference in from wherever you are as long as we have a quorum at the, at City Hall, assuming that the, if the governor did pull the plug on the exemption on the Brown Act.
So we would need three physical people present in chambers. Yeah, Ann?
Correct.
Ann?
I wanted to mention and or ask, I talked to the city manager, you know, one-on-one about this, about the ability for, if we are doing this meeting for the budget introduction, the possibility of allowing or having residents be able to call in with their comments rather than email. It's a bit of a challenge for people to be able to, at this fur of the moment, send in an email, and it may not get in in time. Other agencies have an ability for the public to call in, and I'd like to see that happen. This is an important meeting for the city as far as residents and budget concerns, and they should have an opportunity to call in if we can produce that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Paul?
Yeah, I would agree with Ann on that, on that last part. And just, just an observation regarding the Brown Act. There's no indication overall that sheltering in place is stopping anytime soon. Would be unlikely to relieve these conditions on the Brown Act, which would create you having to open up your site to the public. So I think as long as sheltering is in place, you really can't reverse the current Brown Act restrictions, right? Because it would mandate you letting strangers into your house. They're supposed to be distancing. So probably, we're probably safe on that.
So as long as they're planning for both right now, we've got two, what, week and a half to get, find out how we're going to proceed. Brian?
If I could comment in support of Councilmember Bybee's comments and Councilmember Resnickoff, we are prepared. It's just how we set up the Zoom meeting, if we do do that budget meeting remotely, the public will have ability to participate. We'll unmute them and mute them, kind of like the experience you had today, but we'll be prepared to be able to do that for the budget.
Brian, if I can, be aware, as you know, I saw on the news last night, another Zoom meeting that got Zoom bombed and they took over the presentation again. So that's always a concern.
Or they present information that's not appropriate and we don't have a lag.
Here's what happened, the content, the language was very inappropriate.
Right, we should have a lag of 10 seconds or five seconds before they start so that we don't have them do something we don't want. Okay, this is it, guys. Now we can end the meeting. We're good. Thanks so much again. I appreciate everybody's time. Now you have your afternoon free. Bye.
Brian was saying something.
Thank you.
Oh, Brian, were you waving or saying goodbye? He was saying goodbye.
Yeah.
All right, everybody, have a good afternoon and weekend.